Get our meeting called to order. It's good to see everyone this evening. Hope everyone is having a good Monday, and today is our regular council meeting. I will remind you that the items that are on our agenda, which by the way, we have an agenda here at the podium if you'd like to pick one up and follow along, all of these items have been talked about in our workshops. So the fact that we may not have a whole lot of discussion before voting, don't think that we haven't discussed and looked at everything. So we've called the meeting to order, and we've got two gentlemen who are going to provide for us the prayer and the pledge. I've asked Mr. Tony McBrayer if he would be kind enough to offer our prayer, and then I've asked our police chief Steve Hyman if he would lead us in the pledge. So Tony, if you don't mind, if you'll open us with prayer, please, sir.
[inaudible] God have mercy on all the thankful students and seniors who give us the joy of your God, who thank you for this wonderful town, who need to God, who all live in and work together in God's social lives, and God will pray for families that are still dealing with COVID-19 crisis, who got a little shoe, heal their bodies, or maybe they're in trouble with viruses, or just strengthen the families and encourage them, because they can only watch from afar. God will lift up, mayors give each city council member, administrative staff, legal advisor to God tonight, because they consider these important issues for our community to lead them in God's hands, or take the decision for us all. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you for that nice prayer, Tony. That was, that's very nice. Thank you. All right. You have the agenda before you, and I will need to have a motion to approve the agenda or to make any changes.
Mayor, I'd like to add an item under new business.
Okay.
The governor's come out with a new executive order concerning mask mandates in public buildings. So I'd have a discussion about that.
Okay. So we'll add that under item number nine, under new business. So that's been proposed for your consideration. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Johnny. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. And Jessica does such a good job of sending us our agenda packet out prior to our meeting in plenty of time, and in that were the minutes from our last couple of meetings. So you've had a chance to read through those. We'll take a motion concerning those minutes.
Move we approve.
Thank you. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. We now have time for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, offer any suggestions, ask any questions, we do ask that you sign in to do so. Is there anyone who's signed in, Jessica? Any? Did anybody? I don't think so. Okay. So no public comments. The next item on our agenda is swearing in of new board members, and we are so appreciative. We always have the opportunity to welcome new board members and new volunteers to our City of Tifton organization, and I'm very proud tonight to present two new board members for the Historic Preservation Commission and one new board member for our Downtown Development Authority. So we'll take these one at a time. So let me grab the microphone over here. All right. So Jenny, we'll start with you. So if you'll just meet me up here by the podium. Can you hear that okay, Stephen? Does that sound okay? Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce Ms. Jenny Harper, and Jenny is a new resident.
[inaudible]
I didn't know if you want me to sing karaoke, or what we were fixing to do. So, okay. So we're excited to have you not only in Tifton and at ABAC, but also as part of the Historic Preservation Commission. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the oath of office, and then at the end of that, if you'll just say I do, or I will, or I affirm, then it will be official. So the oath of office is that you, Jenny Harper, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. It's hard to breathe through these masks. My glasses are fogging up. And that you will support and defend the charter of the City of Tifton, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States, that you will attend all meetings of the body to which you are being appointed unless providentially hindered, that you will abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council, and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto, that unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, you have, you will actively participate in all decisions of the body to which you are being appointed, and that you shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia, and that you shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. Do you affirm? Yay. Well, congratulations. You are now, and I know we're making this noise, but I'm gonna shake your hand. I'm sorry. Can't help it. Jack's probably in there pringing. We're warm ass. Welcome to the table. So thank you, Jenny. We appreciate that. Next, I'd like to call Adam Simmons. Adam is also a volunteer to serve with Historic Preservation Commission. He's also a member of the Tifton Heritage Foundation, works with South Georgia Bank, and I think is going to do a great job on HBC. So thank you for all that you're doing for volunteering for this. And Adam also lives in the historic district. So Adam, it's the same procedure. At the end of the oath of office, if you'll just affirm, it says, "I, Adam Simmons, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission of this city, and that you will support and defend the charter of the City of Tifton, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America, that you shall attend all meetings of the body to which you have been appointed unless providentially hindered, that you shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council, and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto, that unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, you shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which you have been appointed, and that you shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia, and that you shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. Do you affirm?"
I do.
Congratulations, Adam. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. And finally, last but not least, we have Mr. Ray Cross.
Mayor, as a form of information, have, did we, since all of this came up quickly, have we had a vote to appoint Ray already?
No, I guess we have not. So we'll need to have a seat. We'll come back to you in just a minute. I have a note on that. I should, sorry about that. We'll be right back with you, Ray. I jumped the gun a little bit. Sorry about that. Thank you for reminding me of that. We will not be, Ray was going to be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission, and so that's what normally Ray would have been here for tonight, would be to be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. But what we've decided to do is to have Ray fill in Jack's unexpired term. Jack is coming off the Downtown Development Authority, and Ray will be going on to fill his unexpired term. He's been on there a couple of months, I guess, now. So that will be what's happening, which will leave us with a vacancy in our Historic Preservation Commission, because we were going to be reappointing Ray tonight, and now we're going to be putting him on the Downtown Development Authority, once we have that vote. So, so, so anyone who's interested in serving on the Historic Preservation Commission, you can get with our city clerk, with Jessica, and I think we've got some folks who have expressed interest, and so we will, we will take care of that with a new application for the, for the Historic Preservation Commission. I hate to make Ray wait to the end of the meeting for the board report. Would you all have opposition to going ahead and let's vote on that position for Ray to be appointed to the Downtown Development Authority, so that we can go ahead and swear him in, and then we can move forward with the rest of the agenda as presented in the board report? Everybody good with that?
I move we appoint Ray.
Okay. So you're, you're gonna go ahead and make a motion to appoint Ray? Okay, thank you.
No sense.
Can you second that? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Again, I apologize about that. That was my fault, and I know that was quite confusing. So Ray?
Yes.
Come on back down. Let's ask.
I said, did Jessica get that? I said, did you get, did you get it?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. So we all voted. Okay. So now it's official. Sorry about that little bit of confusion. All right, Ray. You have the same oath of office that I will read to you for the Downtown Development Authority, and you've served on the DDA before. So we really appreciate you coming back in. You've gone through a lot of the training. You've been involved. So you certainly know what's going to be expected with the Downtown Development Authority. But the oath of office is that you, Ray Cross, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Tifton Downtown Development Authority of this city, and that you will support and defend the charter of the City of Tifton, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America, that you shall attend all meetings of the body to which you have been appointed unless providentially hindered, that you shall abide by the standard for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council, and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto, unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, you shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which you have been appointed, and that you shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia, and that you shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. Do you swear or affirm?
I do.
Excellent. Congratulations, Ray. All right. Any, any other points of order? We good? I apologize about that again. Thank y'all for your patience with that. Okay. Now, we are under the old business section of our agenda, and we have two items there. One is the review of the contract for tax collection services from Tiff County and through the Tiff County Commissioners. You have the, that contract in your packet, and I'd really like, before we review that contract and vote on that contract, I'd really like to just remind everybody that the contract that we're looking at renewing is consistent with, one, what we've done for many, many years with our tax commissioner, and then, two, it is consistent with other contracts with intergovernmental agreements with tax collection, which would be our school system, school board. So just want to remind you of that. I do want to remind you, actually, I'm gonna ask Rob to share with us some information. I'll probably muddle it up. But Rob, can you explain to us about the contract and how it works, and who we're contracting with, and some of the details or specifics about the contract, so we can discuss what we need to do?
Yeah, basically, according to Georgia law, for the tax commissioner to collect municipal taxes, we have to contract with the county to allow the tax commissioner to collect municipal taxes with the approval of the tax commissioner. So basically, the contract, the, it's before the council now, is basically a contract that we've had with the tax commissioner for many years. The rate at which we would pay is, what, is two and a half percent. And again, that is something we've been doing for many years. There's been a question as to whether two and a half percent comes in, and basically, that is the same amount that is paid by the Board of Education to the tax commissioner to collect the taxes on behalf of the Board of Education. As you know, two and a half percent is actually stated in the statute for collecting taxes with the Board of Education. There is no set amount, you know, in the corresponding statute relative to a tax commissioner. So I think what has been done in the past, two and a half percent paid for municipal taxes has been based upon what the Board of Education has been paying. The idea is, is that we contract again with Chad Alexander from January 1, 2021, through the end of December 2021. Again, that contract can automatically renew unless either side gives the other, I believe we have 16 days notice in that, in that contract. So my mind is, is that we need to have a contract with the county. If the county approves it, then we'll have it, you know, for another year, for sure, begin January 1, 2021, through the end of 2021.
And just for clarification purposes, for the public and for the council, we have asked our city manager to begin the process of looking for someone to collect our taxes. If you recall, when the presentation that Wes gave at the workshop outlining basically the plan that he had proposed, you know, that we sent over to the county and detailed all of that, tax collection's part of that, and we really were hoping that that would be the case, that, you know, some of those, if not all of them, at least some of the things could be approved, including tax collection. So it may seem a little bit redundant that here we are back again, talking about a contract, and why are we doing that? I think it's important that we, one, I think that the, the job that the tax commissioner's office is doing for our community is good, and I don't have an issue with it. I think in talking to most of you, and in talking to a lot of the public, a lot of our constituents, they feel the same way. So we felt that it would be prudent to go ahead and offer up the contract, signed contract, to the, to the commission, and to Mr. Alexander, and, and hopefully they will, you know, will, will agree with that. So any discussion, any comments, any, throw it out there for?
I've got one or two.
Okay.
Surprise, surprise. And I do question why, you know, why again?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how many times we have to be told no, but maybe we have to be told no seven, or eight, or 10 times. But we did specifically go back several months ago and ask, are you telling us, county commission, that we can't contract, you know, with, to have the taxes collected? And the answer was, that's what we're telling you. You either take the whole shooting match, or you can't, we will not have Chad collect your taxes. So we said, okay, let's move forward. Then Wes, and, and he came up with, you know, an idea, and, you know, as you recall, I said, you know, what are we doing? But, you know, he convinced me, let's, let's go one more time, and here it is, which was an excellent thing. What was the answer? Was no. Not gonna do it. So I don't mind contracting. At this point, I think we're, we're now looking for someone to provide services.
Yes.
Whether it be animal control, whether it be housing, inmate housing, whether it be tax collection. So in the name of, we're looking for someone to collect taxes. I don't mind contracting with Chad, now whether it has to go through the county, but I only want to pay what Chad said his fee is, which is one and a quarter percent. So I'll be glad to say, we're gonna contract with, with Chad. His fee is one and a quarter percent. I think that's a fair amount. Two and a half percent might be in the statute for Board of Education, has nothing to do with us. But Chad says his fee is one and a quarter percent. So we can send a contract to them saying, we'll, we'll pay one and a quarter percent to Chad, and he can collect our taxes, and off we go. That I'll agree to. I would not agree to the two and a half.
I will say this. After our meeting the other day, of course, I was really boisterous. I was, I was, I was kind of upset. And so I did reach out to a commissioner and asked him what was wrong. You know, I said, I never really got an answer. All we got back was nothing. We didn't hear nothing. You know, what is wrong with this? It wasn't the tax commissioner, the jail, or anything else. It was the roads, which, you know, we, we can talk about it at another time, at another time. But the, the issue with what I presented to them wasn't the tax commissioner or the sheriff's department. It was the roads and the non-emergency calls. That trade-off was what they had the issue with, or why they didn't respond to anything. You know, I think it is government's responsibility. Government can be very confusing to people who are not in it every day, as you and I are. You know, who pays for what, why it gets paid, and how it gets paid is very confusing to the general populace. And right now, they know they can go to one spot for pretty much all their taxes, except for the business license. They can pay their appellorum tax, they can pay their property tax, and TAVT tax, all of that at one centralized location. If we, you know, go in there and start trying to collect these things, and, and, and let me get this, let me say this, is before we contracted with the tax commissioner, the City of Tifton was collecting at two-thirds of percent, so 66 percent. We were letting a third, we were, we were always trying to have to collect a third. So if you look at our budget, we got $3.3 million that would get generated from the property taxes. That's $1.1 million that we would have to sit here and fight for every day, when the tax commissioner has been doing it at 99 percent in a year's time, maybe 98 percent. 98 percent, I think, was the number he gave us a couple of years back when we asked him about that. So 98 percent, and he has to collect the other 2 percent over the course of the next two or three years. But at the end of that third year, we always received 100 percent. A million, $1.1 million is hard for our budget to sit here and try to, you know, and for 40, let's see, so two and a half percent of $3.3 million is $82,500. I've already done the math pretty, pretty this. So you're talking about $41,250 that's going to the county, and then going to the tax commissioner. I think it's worth $41,250 just for efficiency. And, you know, that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Yep. And let me just, just to respond to that. Number one, we collect money five days a week. Okay? So people come in here every day to pay water, garbage, that kind of thing. So it's not like they're having to, this will be the only time they come in all year is the city hall pay, assuming they don't pay by mail. Okay? So because now they're gonna have separate city taxes, which two-thirds of the people rent, and how many of those are in escrow, and it's not even, you know, so that's, that to me is, is a non-issue, because they're already coming in here. What I would say is, if our city manager can't put together some organization that can collect more than two-thirds, eight said people would have to fire you.
Can we do?
I mean, that is, that is incompetence on the city prior, if that's all they could collect. Chad Alexander doesn't have some silver bullet that he's able to collect that nobody else can. And I have full confidence in the city manager that we would collect that same 98 percent. And I don't think it's gonna cost us $82,000 to do it.
It's not gonna cost us $82,000?
I would not think so. We already have an organization in place that collects.
The budget prior to us was $225,000, is what was budgeted for tax commissioner, City of Tifton tax commissioner. So, I mean, you're-
Well, let, let me ask y'all this. Could it, would it be more palatable to you, to all of you, all of us, if we said, we'll agree, we'll sign this contract, however, we need, we ask, when Pete submits that, which he would be the one to do that, we put a timeframe on it to say, if we do not have a response in 30 days, then you hire your ta, we hire a tax collector. Because they're going to provide it, they're going to provide it through the end of the year. That's only four months from now. We haven't advertised yet. We've talked about it, but we haven't advertised yet. Then they came back and said they'd do it through the, through the end of the fiscal year, which is really June 30th, 2021, which still isn't a whole lot of time. But, but if we go back to Pete and say, okay, if we sign off on this contract, Pete, you deliver it, and you let them know in the, in the cover letter that they've got 30 days to respond. And if they don't respond, then here we are again, and it, and it, and we've authorized him to move forward with it, with hiring, and advertising, and interviewing, and hiring a tax commissioner.
When's the county's next meeting?
I don't know.
It'll be first, first Tuesday in-
So the first Tuesday, so tomorrow?
They're all done for the month.
I'm sorry.
September.
It'll be September.
It's September.
It'd probably be September.
So you're already 15 days into it, before they can get their first meeting?
September. So it's the first Tuesday, followed on the fourth Monday.
So, you know, I mean, so they're already 15 days into it, you know, so they got 15 days to say yea or nay to this thing. You know, what we say 45 days, but actually, 30 days. So we'd say 45 days to give us an answer, but at 30 days, we're gonna start preparing. If you're assuming that you're not gonna do that unless you give us some kind of feedback that says, hey, listen, we're, we're gonna do something.
Right.
You know, we're gonna act on it at our next meeting, or something of that nature. You know, yes, I agree. We can't sit here and wait, and pray, and hope, and wish, and all that stuff. You know, it's the same contract that we've always had, just, you know-
But I will say this.
Let's, let's do it. Let's, let's get this behind us.
It's really, if you look at what service delivery is supposed to encompass, tax collection and housing of prisoners is not part of service delivery. These two items have gotten rolled up into a service delivery conversation between the city council and the board of commissioners, but they're not really service delivery items. These are separate contracts. They're not part of service delivery. But they were made part of service delivery when we were told that they, they couldn't, that these two constitutional officers could not perform these services anymore for us. So I want you to keep that in mind, too. So I, I really feel strongly that we need to sign the tax commissioner contract. You know, I, as Rob just said, that we can't contract just with Chad, and I wonder if that, that one and a quarter is just with Chad. Because just like when we have our, with our enterprise funds, we have overhead that we have to, we have to pay from our, that we charge, even though it may be a joint funded project, there's overhead-
There's indirect costs.
Yeah, there's indirect costs. There's the cost of having the air conditioner on for the employees to work. There's the cost of the electricity to hook up a computer. There's the cost of the phone system, and all those things that you would be expecting for a business to cover.
Right.
And that's, I think that's that, that's that additional, that, and I could be wrong, but I'm just making assumptions. If Chad's saying his fee is the one and a quarter, then the only conclusion I have to draw is that the remainder of that fee, or one and a half, I'm sorry, I believe, the remainder of that fee to make the two and a half is, is overhead for-
I think that's a huge, huge assumption to make, that we, we don't know. We, you know, we tried to ask questions about where did these numbers come from when we asked-
Right. We, we're told none of our business.
And they would not give any answers. But in, in my view, the one and a quarter's for Chad to run his office. And his office is, you know, includes what the county commission charges him, I believe. So I, I just not into putting any more city taxpayer money into the general fund.
I don't know how many employees they have. I would assume that covers, you know, employee insurance, and employee benefits, and, you know-
I think it's the whole cost of his money in his office.
Right. I mean, that's, you know, that's, which, which then we'll take on if we, you know, if we don't get a response within 30 days. So-
Mayor, council, the mayor is correct. This, the inmates and the tax collector has nothing to do with service delivery. This was intertwined with the conversations. I will tell you that you have done everything up to this point to show that we were willing to take this off the table, so we wouldn't have to negotiate. There are really nothing to negotiate, except the fees for the jail, and we, I think we can get through that. But this is probably the fourth time. But what, what we have not done yet is present them the contract for these two services. So everything you have done, and I'm gonna use the word "good faith," you have done in good faith. And I think our negotiating, in our voluntary mediation, and through our meetings, and through the reach-outs, the Form 2s, everything has been done in good faith, to say, look, the services are there. We've been in place for years. We're just copying it. What is the problem? So I think before you, I would submit, if it's nothing but semantics, signing the contract, sending it over to Tiff County Commissioners, to say, this is all we can do. In 30 days or 45 days, if you do not hear back, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm ready to go, and I'll advertise, and we'll do the service ourselves.
I mean, I think, I think that's, that's-
But it's good faith. You have done-
No offense, but we've heard that.
I know.
We've heard that before.
But we haven't done this. We haven't signed it because it's not service delivered.
You know, it's a little variation to what we've done before. So, I mean, we've gone and asked specifically, can we do just these? And the answer was no. So we can go back and ask them six more times, and we'll sit here and-
But just like you did the forms. You signed the forms. They, all they had to do was circle it, saying, wow, I don't like this, or this. So they could say that to the judge, whomever, but you've provided everything to them. We haven't provided the contract.
As we've discussed, delay, 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 and then we're behind the eight ball-
I agree.
-one more time. And I'm tired of it.
Well, and remember, we are facing mandatory mediation, and we were talking about this with Rob, when do we think that will happen? And, and the assumption is sometime within the next 60 days. So to be able to say, in a mediation process, everything we've just said, we are truly trying to negotiate and operate in good faith, transparent, not making any changes, not rocking any boats, again. And I know which, I know about the ma, you know, we don't know that mandatory mediation's gonna come out any different. But we can go into mandatory mediation, say, not only did we say we wanted to contract with the tax commissioner and our sheriff, who we have the right to vote on and elect, and see at church, and the grocery- who we have the right to vote on and elect and see at church and the grocery store and everywhere else, but we've signed the contract, which is something that we've not done before.
And again, I will, um, go back to that conversation with the commissioner that, you know, they're feeling the heat, too.
They haven't come back to us, Wes, and said, I mean, we went to them, they haven't broke anything out, we're negotiating against ourselves.
No, I wouldn't say-
They're not, nothing has come back, so we're gonna go back again. They haven't come back and said, hey, we'll do the sheriff, and we'll do the, the tax commissioner. We've got none of that. So we're guessing as to what they might consider. All they had to do was come back and say, hey, let's, let's do these like we asked.
Jack, just a point of clarification, Rob, in mandatory mediation, 'cause I think that's a good point, mandatory mediation, would inmate housing and the sheriff even come up in mandatory mediation because they're not part of service delivery?
No, it wouldn't.
Oh, okay, interesting.
But I, I think what's been brought out is that because even though they're not part of a service delivery strategy to be submitted to DCA by the county saying, if you don't take our proposal, we're not gonna let you contract with these, uh, people, that kind of brought it into the service delivery discussions, which would not normally be, you know, in those discussions.
Right. So there wouldn't be, these two contracts would not be part of mandatory mediation, or there would be, even though they really wouldn't be?
They'll, they would, they, they should not be.
That's all, so Jack's correct.
Uh, whether they will or they won't, the bottom line is, is that you could, you could have a service delivery strategy, and the county still tell you, we're not gonna let you contract, you know, with the sheriff or with the tax commissioner. Then DCA would, would have nothing to say whether they have that contract or not, because it's not part of this, the strategy.
So it, you, you will, you'll essentially finish this, this step, we have done everything else. Again, this is the fourth time discussing it, you would have completed the step process, and that would be, that would be the, the only thing left to do.
I just think that we gotta keep on the forefront. For our citizens, the efficiency of the tax commissioner collecting for us is, that's the forethought, that should be put on the table or thought when we make our decision.
And the concern is if we change that number, and I'm asking this a question, is the concern, if we change that number, we've now changed the contract?
I mean, I would, yeah, I mean, we have the contract. We knew where their figure came from, you know, their figure come from the Georgia law that county or the tax commissioner has a right to contract with the Board of Education at a two and a half percent rate of tax collection. That money is given to the county, uh, two, one and a quarter is given to the county, one and a quarter is given to the tax commissioner's office. Uh, that was the same agreement that we've been working under since two thousand and eight, twelve?
Yeah, it's been, been a while.
Something like that. And I just think that, uh, you know, uh, our community is efficient. Um, there's been other communities that have taken what we've done and sort of implemented in their community, and here we are going back, it's almost like kind of how the school system went from block scheduling to seven period days, and then they realized, hey, block scheduling was really the way to go, so they went back to it, you know? Um, you use that analogy, but, um-
Did you, did, I'm sorry, did you start with say something?
Well, I mean, I hear about the efficiency, and I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't think that's an issue, 'cause I think we'd be just as efficient. But there is an advantage in my mind to having a separate city tax bill. I, I got my tax bill today, a little bit earlier than send me. Two-thirds of it, or close to it, is county and, and Board of Education. A small, very small piece is the City of Tifton, but when people talk about taxes, all they think about is that one big number. And they think, 'cause I'm in the city, I got this big number. Well, no, a small piece is the city, but you don't, when you look, you gotta look at the details to see that that's just the city. And I would tell you, when they, they get two bills now, and one is huge because it's Board of Education and county, and the other, City of Tifton, is small-
Well, let, let me ask you this-
That's an advantage.
Would you be willing to sign off on this contract with that thirty-day timeframe in there, understanding that we are not hopeful that there will be a response? Because I think it's important, one, that we are consistent in what we're, what we've been doing, and that is consistent with what we've been doing. And even though the statute specifically references Board of Education, it is what we've been doing. And I think a lot, like you said, I think a lot of cities and counties and school systems use that two and a half percent as their, as their magic number, as their gauge. Um, I think it's important that we sign the contract. In my mind, like I said, I think Chad pulled out the one and a half percent because that's his portion, and if we could contract with just Chad and not go through the county, then that's fine. I would agree with that a hundred and ten percent. But I don't have a problem paying some overhead to the, to the general fund of the county board of commissioners because they do house that department in their facility. And like I said, there's overhead associated with running that department.
You're assuming that's not in Chad's one and a quarter? That's, you know, you're making the assumption that his one and a quarter doesn't cover the expenses and, and whatever the county might charge, but we're looking for vendors.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna guess, I don't wanna guess, he has seven employees in his department, and I, I believe, and I, and I could be wrong, I, I think his budget's four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. So I, I, if I remember correctly, that's pretty close.
If you want, you wanna send it at one and a quarter and see if they deny it, and then you can send you two, and see you do over that.
I just don't know if you're in a position to, you know, barter right now with percentages because it's, it really is factual that the Board of Ed and what, what we've been paying for years, once you step out there and actually redesign something, then you're, essentially, it's a change.
That's a change, yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
And, and I don't, but, but when you make a decision that, okay, you're now gonna go out and, and put out, take bids or whatever for services, sometimes you find out, oh, my God, I've been paying two and a half percent, and I can get, you know, somebody else can do it for two, or can do it for one and a half, unless you, that's why we put things out for bid periodically, you know, to see, you know, what's the market.
We're essentially saying, we're gonna find somebody that can collect at ninety-nine percent for forty thousand dollars and then fund their entire department with the other forty thousand. That's what you're saying, that is exactly what you're saying with the amount of money that we spend. Forty thousand can go to the salary of the employee, and forty thousand can go to the rest of the department. You cannot do that for eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
And we tried four, we tried four times with the county, please, can we sign that contract? Now, if you wanna do a fifth one, if you wanna do a fifth one, and I, and, and I'm, you know, just, we can argue amongst ourselves, but I will, I will make this statement, I will agree to that. If they come back and say no, by George, 'cause we agreed that the last thing was, I mean, I, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm mad about the whole thing.
I understand.
When I agreed before with what Wes's proposal was, the agreement was, once this is done, we're done, we're gonna move forward. But, oop, wait a minute, wait a minute, now we're gonna pull a couple of things out.
Yeah.
Well, I, I will relent one more time and say, I'll send this, but by George, if they say no, now I'm not, I, I will not vote for anything else on that.
I understand.
We either, it's the last time, or it's not the last time. And I'm sure the last time is, you know, I mean, let's continue negotiating against ourselves, 'cause that's what we're doing. And then we send the next letter saying, well, please tell us what can, what will you do?
Well, and I think the, the difference here is, we did not have a signed contract. That, that's the only difference, that's why I want them, they're just saying, we're, we're not gonna approve a signed contract. Well, let's send them a signed contract and let them say we're not approving it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll relent. It's, it, we've kind of, you know, gone a little backwards. Uh, we're having our discussion before they're doing a motion on the table. But we've had the discussion, so we probably, you know, go a long way.
Okay, well, never mind.
We don't need any more discussion.
I, I just think, you know, I would think what would be appropriate, if somebody wants to make a motion, you know, to submit the contract as proposed, two and a half percent, and then if somebody wants to second that, and then if somebody wants to try to amend that motion with one and a quarter, but I think we ought to go ahead and get the motion, you know-
All right, well, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the contract as it is, as presented.
At two and a half percent, as presented in our packet, okay. So we have a motion on the floor, um, is there a second? All right, well, I'll second it so we can have discussion. So now we have a motion and a second, two and a half percent. So we've had a lot of discussion already, is there ongoing discussion, or should I call for the vote?
Will it be with the caveat that you have a deadline?
Oh, yes, with thirty days, yes, I want you to have the thirty days. If they do not respond within thirty days of the date of the letter, so if you deliver it tomorrow, it would be tomorrow, is that correct?
Let me pull, let me pull the panel up.
And if, if they say no, we will move forward and not bring this up again.
We will not, we'll no more talking about this.
Right.
That's the only-
We need a response within thirty days, yesterday.
This will be it.
Yep, yesterday.
If we sit, if we sign this contract with Chad, and we're gonna send it to, to the-
Commissioners.
But don't review it?
Mm-hmm.
Now, uh, uh, it, it, it's time to stop kicking the can. It's time, you know, we, no, eh, 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 we, it's time to just, we don't, we've given them all, all the opportunity, we, we don't, we don't scratch the rubber band till it's got, at, at their pulp.
Oh, I know. I know.
So let's just go ahead, do the contracts, sign the contracts, send it, send it to them with the thirty days.
Response, they need to respond to us with a been writing within thirty days.
That's right. So the date, yeah, so we're, we're right in line, the date, the next, the official meeting for the county will be Monday, September fourteenth. So that's, that is thirty days, which that should be on their agenda, and they should be either talking about it or don't talk about it. So by September fifteenth, I'll, I'll know.
Okay, so are y'all comfortable with September fifteenth as the date?
I'll go with it.
All right, so Wes, did she amend your motion?
Remand your motion?
So I amend my motion to, to present the contract, the two and a half percent with thirty day, um-
September fifteenth, let's do it date specific.
September fifteenth.
Which is thirty days.
And, and get amended that you won't ever bring it up again if they say no?
I'm not amending that.
No.
'Cause I'm not gonna quit trying, that's why, 'cause if you, you do not come effectively there by quitting, that's for sure.
Or you continue negotiating with yourself, 'cause that's what we're doing.
Okay, all right, so we got a motion on the table that has been amended to reflect the September fifteenth response date. I'll sup, si, second that, I'll support that in my second.
You second it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so are we, all right, any further discussion? I will call for the vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now I guess what we get to talk about. Now-
Bring on the sheriff's conference.
We get to review the jail inmate agreement between the City of Tifton and Tiff County through the Tiff County Sheriff. Um, again, um, in talking very early on with our sheriff, and then not having any further discussion, once all this kind of blew up, um, the sheriff has presented to us a contract for, um, housing our prisoners. We have also talked about going through the process of doing some things that will hopefully reduce the number of people that we are sending to the jail. Um, I will tell you that, um, I won't mention any names specifically, but a friend of mine called me, uh, who had some interaction with some folks at the Turner County Sheriff's Department, and they were ecstatic about the fact that they were going to get a significant revenue boost from the City of Tifton. And I will remind, uh, reminded her, and she talked, she and I talked about the fact that, yes, it's a shame because the money that is paid to house prisoners could also help pay for a deputy or a sheriff's car or administrator, jailer, you know, those kind of things. Well, Turner County's very excited about, um, the boost to their budget. So, um, anyway, I did want us to, uh, to review this jail inmate agreement. Um, it's my understanding that the sheriff is willing to negotiate on the cost per day. However, he cannot negotiate with us without the blessing of the Tiff County Board of Commissioners. So my suggestion would be, let's take that contract and sign off on that, change the amount, the per diem amount, because he said he was willing to negotiate if they will give his bless, their blessings, and let's put in a number that we're comfortable with, and then sign it and send it back. So, um-
I don't disagree with you, mayor, but in the interest of, since we wanted to send the same contract back to, uh, Chad with the two and a half percent, I suggest, and we found out that forty-eight dollars and something we've been paying is still high, we keep that contract and say, okay, you do it for the same thing you did, it's forty-eight dollars, we'll do that, even though we can go to Turner County for thirty-six or thirty-seven or something, but we'll keep money in Tiff County, and the prior contract was forty-eight something, we'll send that contract with, with, at forty-eight, I would go with that.
I'm fine with that, and you wanna make that as a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
All right.
Can you repeat your motion?
That we approved the, a contract for this same amount that the, the prior contract was for.
All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, all right, discussion.
Is this realistic?
I don't know.
You know what I'm saying, I mean-
We, we've got to start somewhere, we've got to throw a number in somewhere, um-
Did we ever get an explanation why I went to pick you up?
No.
Oh, okay, well, if you're weak.
I mean, Turner County's thirty-six or thirty-seven.
Thirty-five.
You know, forty-eight's a pretty good number.
So-
We at forty-eight?
Now, so I, I, I recommend, in our last four conversations about this, just the same, um, I recommended ten percent, uh, which would be fifty-four dollars, which is fair, costs are going up, um, et cetera. Uh, I think if we had the chance to talk to the sheriff and chief, and, and he could talk about that, I think that would be realistic. So that's what the number we've sent over on our forms, that's the number that we have been sticking with.
Fifty-four or forty-eight?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
That was ten percent.
You know, we, and I hear you, Pete, but my gosh, you know, this is, this is the first time that the sheriff has even intimated even that, that he would negotiate, okay? The contract used to give us free three hours or four hours, he said, no, that's done. Here's the new price, take it or leave it. Well, by George, I'm tired of take it or leave it, you know, here, I've heard all the take it or leave it's that I wanna hear. Forty-eight dollars compared to the neighboring county at thirty-six or thirty-seven is a dang good price.
Well, and, and, you know, I have no problem with the forty-eight because it's, it's to open the conversation. I mean, if he comes back and says, I can do it for, you know, fifty-four, and that's the best I can do, then it's, then the decision's ours.
Then it's a different discussion, yeah.
If he comes back and says, I can do it for fifty, you know, so-
That's right, y'all are, are on go, um, I did talk to the sheriff in Turner County this morning, and that contract is ready for your approval, and you have, you are ready to go.
I mean, sheriff, our sheriff, Tifton, ought to be glad we give him forty-eight dollars if we can go somewhere, you know? And we're glad to do it.
We probably need to have you amend your motion to do the date specific like we did with the, the tax, um, commissioner, say-
Thirty, same, same language, thirty days.
To September fifteenth.
With the same, and I'll put, and I will put it in there, if they don't agree with it, I refuse, I will never bring it up again. Right, Wes?
Oh, Lord.
Right, Wes.
Okay, so we have a motion, sign the contract at forty-eight dollars per day. We need a response by September the fifteenth. Yea or nay, or at least begin discussions, negotiations. We have a second, is there any more discussion?
I'll second.
Yeah, you seconded, yeah, I'm just asking, I was just kind of recapping what we have on the table, is there any, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you got all that, Wes? All right, now we are down to the consent agenda. Um, I do want to pull out item number seven, the approval of the vehicle purchase for animal control services. Um, and Rob's probably gonna fuss at me because I wanna pull that one aside, um. So let's look at items, we can take items five and six, the, um, resolution accepting the twenty-nineteen audit, and then the general board appointment policy that we've, we've been discussing. If we can take those two, and then let's come back to number seven, I want to address number seven specifically. So if y'all want to take five and six-
I'm going to accept those five and six.
Five and six, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the reason that I wanted to pull out item number seven, um, at our last meeting, I was very, very vocal about my disdain with animal control. And I had to stop and think about, and I've had several more conversations, um, with several people in the community about that. And I had to really separate my concern with animal control versus shelter operations. Those are two different things. So I wanted to, to kind of go back and explain my concern and my, my, you know, what I'm so frustrated with is, it's, it's, it's tied into shelter operations. Now, I know that you had made a comment that you were frustrated with, um, some people had called and they had, they had complained animals needed to be picked up, and you couldn't get it-
Yeah, I had to, I had to call my county commissioner to get it done, so-
Yeah, well, I will tell you this, that the, um, shelter employees feel like they are, um- and animal control employees feel like they're offering this service free of charge to city residents. They don't realize that their budget comes from the general fund. So here, you know, it's kind of, here we go again. But I do want to get, I do want to try to figure out a way to work on shelter operations if this thing stays together. I don't know that it will or that it won't. But I'm very concerned about shelter operations, which is different from animal control. And Pete has shared some information with me that I want him to share with you just concerning numbers of calls and some, some statistics and everything.
Okay, well, first on the animal control. And we're, it's, we're moving forward with that particular service. The chief pulled some numbers off the CAD from nine-one-one, so just so we could kind of gauge on the number of calls inside the city. So we pulled it, we have it from January of twenty twenty to current. There's been two hundred and seventy-four calls essentially in eight months inside the city for animal control. So if it comes through nine-one-one, there's a dog or cat or something, they call nine-one-one, automatically we have to respond via the PD. So we respond, if it's a dog that's, you know, jumping on a cat or just acting crazy, then they in turn call animal control. So two, two hundred and seventy-four calls in eight months, if you divide that by approximately one hundred and eighty-four workdays, that's one point five calls a day for, that, that, what we're, what we would be doing. Where it gets complicated, seventy-five of them, or twenty-seven percent, are after five o'clock. So we would have to rearrange that, and obviously, you know, we would have to work that schedule more differently.
At our last meeting, we asked you to, Rob confirmed that we were co-owners in the real estate where the shelter is, and we asked you to send a letter. Has there been any response to that letter that was sent?
Alright, so for, so we'll finish with animal control first, because we, yeah, animal control. So I approached Dan, and Jeff and I had a conversation. I, I was going to put it in Public Works, and because of insurance, ESG is not going to be able to provide that service. So the chief and I had a short conversation, but this is going to have to be rearranged a little differently that we could be able to provide the service and do it the way we need to with one person. Tonight, for your approval, is the, the animal control truck, nineteen thousand dollars, I think it's a great deal, out of Virginia, stainless steel body, everything that we would need for animal control. So essentially, we'd be setting up the service probably, you know, for, we have the vehicle, probably eighty thousand dollars all in for, for that training and the budget. So I would have to work on what, what department that's going to be under, et cetera, et cetera. So animal control, it's ready to go, but I wanted you to be realistic on the calls and what we have to do to be even fair to the police officers who are responding. Once we respond, we got to do something about it.
So animal control is not animal shelter?
It's, it's too different. So that's, that's what, so if you approve, if you want to go forward with this service, this is what we're looking at. Again, this is new monies that we'll have to tuck on, but can we do it? Yes. Now, moving to the animal shelter, you asked for us to communicate with the county. I did. I believe I sent you the copy of the letter to the county manager, talking about the shelter, proposing that we discuss it, that we could, they could buy us out, we could buy them out, but we have to deal with the shelter. If not, then per the law, the property would have to sell, and et cetera, et cetera. Hopefully, we don't have to get to that point. I did send that out last week to the county manager, and I have not heard a word. So in that letter, I gave him thirty days. So again, in thirty days, Rob will have to take the next step, because obviously, we own half of it. And if we go forward with animal control, animal shelter, the expectations is that we're going to do it a little better. So that's, that's for your consideration, and, and we're ready to go. If you are, we just have to be mindful of what we're up against, and living in the city, you have a higher level of service that we provide, and I just don't want the expectations for you to be unrealistic because hiring three animal control officers or two animal control officers, because we could go twenty-four hours a day, probably won't be realistic.
Do we have a, like, a proposed budget for this animal shelter in all of Jezz?
Not yet.
Well, me and Jack, we, we'd love for our city to start picking up yard debris, but we, that wasn't, we, we didn't have it in the budget to do that. So I'd like to know what it's going to cost us to start this thing.
That's what you were saying about eighty-five thousand.
And, and.
Eighty-five grand?
Alright, well, you're gonna, how many, average, how many pickups a day?
One point five.
Okay, so surely, I mean, surely this person ain't gonna be sitting around waiting for that one and a half pickup. They're gonna be doing something else. I, I would be joking, saying, well, they could collect taxes while they're, while they're picking up dogs, but I won't say, I won't say that.
We realistically had a call, though, but, and we're strongly against.
Can we get a policeman to train as the, as the dog pickup person, and?
I would, well, it's, it's really is a, a good topic. I, I would suggest that we put a, we, we add an additional police officer. He or she would be an animal control officer, which would be good, but more importantly, they could transport, they could assist transport prisoners up to Turner County.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you'd, one of these things, it takes two or three things, and it's, it's worth the money, so.
It's just the after-hours would get very complicated.
Are they, how much, I always hear now that, you know, they won't come after hours. That's been one of the points.
I think they do. I think if it comes through nine-one-one, they have to respond if it's a.
Dangerous animals.
Dangerous, some terminology.
Got it, here.
He's right there.
Is that correct?
If, if they're called after hours and it's a dangerous animal situation, they're, they have to respond?
Yeah, the animal's trouble.
Uh-huh.
We respond first to see what the issue is, and then if it's dangerous or something, or something like that, we need to call.
Is that considered a non-emergency call?
Depends on. If it's a cat or tree, or, you know, dog is running loose, yeah, it's.
It's emergency to the person that's getting bit by the dog.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that, I just wanted us to have all of that information before we looked at approving or not approving this vehicle purchase, so.
So this vehicle right now, that we're talking about approving, to pick up animals, they're gonna go to the same place that's in not the best condition?
Theoretically, what we have to do is, we have until October to work that out, so yes. I mean, what we have to do is, I gotta get the truck, and I'm gonna get someone hired, but we're not gonna start that until October. But to answer your question, if we don't have anything worked out, or we don't get any resolve from the property, then, yes.
So we would be pretty, pretty much putting the cart before the horse with the situation, because we just have a car or a truck, but no real solution?
Well, yes, but we need that, we need that cart. We need that cart before, before.
So is there not any more of that, that, that we could find? I mean, until we, you know what I mean? Why would we go ahead and buy the, the truck before we figure that?
I believe that, you know, there are some facilities in our area that we, that would contract to house animals. So if we get to a, my understanding is, if we get into a bind with this, with the animal shelter here in Tifton, we can probably contract with someone, you know, to take the animals, at least until we can figure out what we're gonna do with the current shelter.
Can, can we, can we get some of those ideas of who can we contract with first?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, my understanding is maybe Cook County would be available, but I think we can certainly do that. And I think there are other facilities available.
Turner County. I know what you're gonna say. You're gonna say Turner County, drop off your prisoner, drop off the stray dog, and there we go.
Problem solved, right there.
Yeah, I lucked out. I know we're.
In the back of the truck?
Yes.
MJ, I mean, you make.
Whoever survives gets the.
MJ makes a, a good point. So I, I've, I've searched nationwide, and I didn't have very much luck. This one came up in Virginia. They, just, there's not a lot out in a really good shape. So if we do all the legwork, and we're ready to go, and we have a truck, then we're.
You know, I just want to be sensible about just having a truck, and then now we got a truck, and we end up having to sell a truck.
You're right. We're in the window. We're in sixty days.
Here we allocate, fine, instead of.
But Rob, I don't believe Rob says there's places that can go. Rob has an inside track on places that you can take animals, so he says if.
Yeah, he, he would know.
He would know.
But I think Pete's kind of up against the gun with needing to commit to this purchase, with, you know, otherwise they're gonna sell to somebody else, so.
I'm moving by the truck.
But can a truck be, I mean, I mean, let's just say, I mean, how much is a, is a truck?
It's at nineteen thousand?
No, no, I'm saying, how much would it cost for a truck to be outfitted the same way? You know, I mean, let's just say we get a new truck.
Seventy grand.
I mean, we all, I mean, se- seventy? You know, I mean, here's the thing, I mean, you got a nineteen thousand dollar truck that could last two years, or a seventy thousand dollar truck that can last seven years, you know? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I know seventy thousand dollars seems like a lot to you and I, but I mean, if we're gonna.
That's two, that's two police cars, and that's, that's a dump truck. It's really, it gets complicated. It's not, it's, we, the capital budget is, it's just not easy to say, well, let's just buy a new one, because it's a new service, this is unbudgeted funds, this is everything starting brand new.
If I could wave my magic wand, which I say a lot, you know, would keep animal control there with the county, and work on shelter operations, and improve those, and, and support the volunteers that are doing all the work, and, and make some changes there, and make some improvements to the facility, so that it's, that you know that, I mean, I may be pipe dreaming here. I, I don't know. You know, I mean, that's, that now, animal control is service delivery. That is a specific thing, so. But I did want to clarify my frustrations that I had shared, and I don't retract any of them, but I wanted to clarify, that's shelter operations, not animal control, so just wanted to clarify that, and I didn't, didn't make that very clear, so. But it's up to y'all. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's.
Can we take them?
Well, he has to.
We can. I mean, if, if they sell the truck, we'll just figure it out from there.
Pete, is your recommendation, if we're gonna do it, buy the truck?
If, if you're ready to do the service, I recommend we get this truck for nineteen thousand, even if we get, because it's a, it's a two fifty, and we could get probably four years of life out of it. It's stainless steel body, in really, really good condition, so again, for startup costs, for startup costs, something like this, I would, I'd recommend it all day. I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy new.
I think we go ahead and do it.
Well, I can't make a motion, so I'll need a motion to some.
I move we buy the truck.
Okay, so we have a motion to purchase the truck. Is there a second? I'll second. I can't make a motion, but I can second a motion.
You can second.
I can second. Alright, so we have motion to second to move forward with the purchase of the truck. It may be sold already, we don't know, but, and then you'll let us know about the status of the letter when you hear something?
Yeah, so thirty days, they got a lot to consider in thirty days.
Yeah, I know. Alright, so we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion on the purchase for animal control service? Alright, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Is that two nays?
Yeah.
Okay, so Jack, myself, and Johnny were yes. Did you get that? Jessica, and Wes, and MJ, basically. Okay. Alright, now we're under new business.
Before we move, before we move on, can I make, and, and I appreciate our, our, who will, who will be our county commission chairman come January, and we appreciate you coming, but I just wanted to pick up on a point of something that, that you might can do for us, because we had that issue with, at the animal shelter, their view is, city residents aren't paying. Well, the people in the tax assessor's office have that same view. I mean, I heard thirty minutes of, they can't charge city residents for coming out there and looking. So if you don't do anything else, if you would educate those people that are countywide services of how those things are funded, and I think the response that city residents will get will be better when those people realize, hey, wait a minute. They're paying just as much as everybody else, and, and it would, it's, it's an issue out there, and you don't know it unless somebody comes up and tells you, and they've told me that.
I don't even know that, right?
Thank you, thank you, Tony. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Because as we know, you represent all of us throughout the county.
Yes, all of us. Alright, thank you for that, and thank you, Tony. Alright, under new business, we have a, in your packet, a resolution supporting the Georgia Bioscience Research Incorporated. That's a new item on our agenda that was not workshopped. This is coming from, this request is coming from Brian Marlowe, who is the executive director of the Tiff County Development Authority. Rob, you want to pack the details on this?
This was, I'm not sure what's in your packet, but I've been speaking with Brian Marlowe this morning, and facing revised resolution. It's fairly short, maybe my guess, I just read it, but just for your information, this legislative session, the Georgia legislative passed the HOPE Act. And basically, what the HOPE Act is, it authorizes licenses to be issued to universities, and also to private companies for the production, growing, and manufacturing of low THC oil. Evidently, it's got some therapeutic value. This will allow for its manufacture and then sale through pharmacies. The application requires a letter of support from local governments where their primary facility is going to be located, which I understand is going to be out there somewhere around the airport, possibly. But if you, just give me a second, I'll just read this right quicks. This is a resolution authorizing a letter of support on behalf of Georgia Bioscience, Bioscience Research, Inc. This emphasis secure medical, man, mayor of one license from the state of Georgia. Whereas the city of Tifton, this municipal corporation organized and existing on laws of the state of Georgia. Whereas the city of Tifton, in order to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Tifton, in Tiff County, supported the development of trade, commerce, education, employment. And whereas the city of Tifton recognizes that the HOPE Act, House Bill three twenty-five, three twenty-four, enacted by the Georgia Assembly during the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty legislative session, and was given that until July one, twenty twenty, authorizes the Medical Cannabis Commission to issue licenses related to producing, growing, and manufacturing low THC oil. And whereas the city of Tifton is aware that Georgia Bioscience Research, Inc., an corporation organized and existing on laws of the state of Georgia. Whereas the city of Tifton understands that Georgia Bioscience, Bioscience Research, Inc. has significant participation by minority women and veterans as owners, suppliers, and partners of business licenses under the HOPE Act. And whereas the city of Tifton recognizes that Georgia Bioscience Research, Inc. has been working closely with numerous communities' stakeholders. And whereas the city of Tifton recognizes that in the event Georgia Bioscience Research, Inc. has granted license for the production, growing, and manufacturing low THC oil pursuant to the HOPE Act, with a primary facility in the Tifton, Tiff County area, will enhance the economic development of this community, create job opportunities for area residents, and otherwise benefit all citizens of the city of Tifton and Tiff County. And whereas the city of Tifton recognizes that the application for medical cannabis licenses require letters of support from local governments. Now therefore be resolved, the city of Tifton hereby authorize the mayor to submit a letter to the Georgia Medical Cannabis Commission in support of Georgia Bioscience Research, all evidence for cure one or more medical cannabis licenses pursuant to the HOPE Act, House Bill three eighty-four. And that would be the resolution authorizing the mayor to issue a letter to the Georgia Medical Cannabis Commission supporting these efforts.
Right, in talking with Mr. Marlowe, he has also asked that the Board of Commissioners, County Board of Commissioners, provide a similar resolution, and in my role as mayor, serve on the Tiff County Development Authority as vice chair, and it's on our agenda for Thursday. We have, we meet on Thursday for the Development Authority to also provide a resolution to that effect.
I move we approve the resolution.
Alright, thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Alright, the next item is just a little bit of housekeeping. Our next meeting would fall on Labor Day, and so it's proposed that we move our meeting to the next date, our workshop meeting to Tuesday, September the eighth. So are y'all good with that? Need a motion to accept that date. Thank you, MJ. Is there a second?
Check.
Thank you, Johnny. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we will have our workshop meeting on Tuesday, September the eighth, and I assume City Hall will be closed on Labor Day. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Alright. Alright, and then Jack has added discussion about the new executive order from Governor Kemp. Do you want to have, who wants to lead the discussion? Rob, with the new, doing that, as the.
Well, yeah, I'd just like to start out by saying that, as you're aware, Kemp issued a new executive order, I believe, this Friday. I think it was in light of the lawsuit that he had with Mayor Bottoms in Atlanta. Basically, what Kemp, I think he dismissed the lawsuit, the, you know, the injunction he had against Mayor Bottoms, and is now, in his executive order, has authorized municipalities, local governments, to. and is now, in his executive order, has authorized municipalities, local governments, to, uh, make their own requirements, including mask requirements, my understanding, I honestly have not had a chance to read the entire executive order, but I think it also allows businesses, uh, to make their own rules, and prohibit people from going in, uh, if they're not wearing masks or not, but it does give, uh, the city the right to manage their own, uh, properties, public buildings, the, um, uh, it's, it's my understanding that we are, and in fact, I have received from GMA, a revised model mask ordinance, they had one about, uh, maybe two months ago, uh, that, but then Kemp made his executive order saying we couldn't do it, now that we can do it, GMA has sent me a revised, uh, model mask ordinance from municipalities, um, I have not had a chance to look at that yet, we can certainly fashion, uh, our ordinance after the model works from GMA, so we're, you know, from my standpoint, if it's something that you all wanna do to, uh, require masks in, in public buildings, and, and maybe other matters that are now authorized, or actions that we can take to prevent the spread of the COVID virus, I'm ready to go ahead and put that ordinance together for your consideration and, uh, and approval.
Yeah, I, I have not had the opportunity, I had talked to Jack about this earlier, I would say that I'd have the opportunity to really read through GMA summaries, and would, and I just have, I have ran out of time for our meetings, and I would say.
I have not, you know, that, that's what I'm, for example.
I know that it's been, um, it's been heavily discussed through the Georgia Municipal Association, you know, that represent all five hundred and thirty-seven cities and municipalities in Georgia, and, um, the, you know, the whole idea was not, uh, it was to give local, you know, it's, it's the home rule situation, to give local government what you felt was best to do in our buildings, and same thing with our, uh, you know, the county board of commissioners, for the county buildings, um, also being local government, so, um, do you want to review that, I mean, I know you wanted to discuss it tonight, Jack, any comments you wanna make?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see, you know, whether, if, um, Rob would put together the ordinance, because we, we've discussed about, you know, going ahead, and if the governor gives us the authority to require masks in, in government buildings, and, and here, you know, obviously, meetings and that kind of thing, I, I would add to it, if we should support, uh, private businesses that ask for our assistance in enforcing theirs, you know, that, I mean, if they've got a mask ordinance, and they would ask for the city to support them, and, and to help with that, and the governor, governor said that's okay, then I think we should do that.
I do remember, that was something that was discussed amongst the GMA officers, and I do believe that is in the executive order, could be wrong, but I, I think.
I, I believe, I believe it is too, and I think we should, you know, you know, private business reaches out to us and says, can you help us?
And we have the authority to enforce.
I, I think we should, we should do that, so.
Do you, um, would y'all like to have a special call meeting for that, uh, because obviously.
It's a lot, it'll be a lot to discuss.
We're, we're some, sometimes off, or, you know, we have, think, this is a long stretch, right, Jessica? Three weeks, still, our work session?
Yeah, I think we need to, you know, I don't know when, Rob, you know, I assume you have that tomorrow.
I can't.
Do we sunset, do we sunset ordinance, or, I mean, we're not gonna wear masks forever.
Yes, you are.
Again, I'm sure, I, I would imagine, the, uh, the model ordinance probably has something in there, again, I just have not had a chance to look at it, but I'm, I'm confident that it does.
Uh, what, what's it take us, twenty-four hours to call a special call meeting? Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we give Rob the opportunity to review this evening or tomorrow, let him send us something out, and then we can, we can have a special call meeting if we need to do that this week?
It's up to y'all.
We should twenty-four hour notice, or y'all.
I mean, the sooner, the sooner the better on some of this thing, sooner or later, science.
Yeah, I can't do Thursday either, but.
Science prevails.
Everybody, probably by noon tomorrow.
Maybe if we had, you know, um, maybe Friday morning or something, a special call, that'd give everyone a chance to kind of review and.
Network.
We can, so, so let's sort of shoot for that, so, okay, alright, uh, the next item on our agenda is, um, regarding the Corona Relief Fund Grant Agreement. So, what you're passing out there?
Dana, Dana's here for any questions, um, if you remember, uh, we can have, go two weeks, uh, the CARES Act hit, uh, we had to submit some paperwork, uh, we filled out what we needed to, and the CARES Act obviously provided, um, monies to local governments for the coronavirus, whether it's, um, through salaries or PPE, uh, anything directly related, uh, to the outbreak, so we did that, um, and what I'm sharing with you is, uh, the recipient, uh, both the city and the county, uh, for our total amount, so we did receive two hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars so far, the resolution, uh, before you tonight, is the agreement for the grant itself, we need to put that in place, uh, to send forward, uh, but what, really what we're up against is a September one deadline, so realistically, what we're doing is looking in the rears on monies that we spent for public safety, those are on the front lines, uh, and realistically, right down to wages that we could recoup, uh, that we spent already, so, um, if Dana's been through a couple, um, presentations and seminars, we, we've both been working on this pretty hot and heavy, and can you just give a two-minute overview on where you think, you know, we are, what, what we are now, uh, and, uh, your opinion as the long run, if, if we get to the full eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, which would be great, uh, we'd have to come back to you with a plan on phase two, so phase one is gonna be a quick turnaround, so Dana, go ahead.
Yeah, we've had several different webinars, I've been on the DCA, GMA, Carl Vinson Institute, um, basically, everybody has the same questions, what qualifies as an expense, um, when we signed up on the portal, once we did that, created our username and everything, then they automatically send us the first thirty percent of the funds, and now we have to go back and prove to keep those funds, you know, what's related to COVID, so that's where we're at, right now, I've already got the numbers up of what we can key in as our project for the first draw, um, then there's the rest of the funds, well, we had to have everything dated, invoices, um, everything has to be dated by, before September first, so that's where we're at, which don't give us much time at all, so I had talked with Kelly Lang today, and she was saying, but that our most, um, islands would be, you know, some expenses, like we have the drive-through, we had to upgrade the drive-through, um, that's related to COVID, we could get reimbursed for those, and, and then, of course, the salaries, the overtime, and any supplies, which we have spent, um, close to twenty-four thousand, just on COVID masks, you know, all that good stuff, so.
That's our plan for September first, we, we have to turn this around pretty quickly, um, wages will be in there to come up with the two hundred and sixty-four thousand, so this is a good thing for us, uh, and we're gonna keep on going, but we'll have a plan for phase two as soon as we learn when the money should hit, uh, we have some things that went out at the fire department, uh, when EMS was in there, so that's gonna count, but the biggest thing is that we prepared City of Tipton, uh, for the future, the, the PPE, the masks, if we do the masks, I've gotta have a pretty good stash of masks if the, if people do not have one, so we've got a lot of things to buy, this money will allow us to do this, so I, my recommendation is to move forward with this grant, I'll keep you posted, but we're, uh, we've backdated two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars back to us.
So, so we need to approve the resolution?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, so.
So moved.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Alright, thank you, Dana, thank you for your hard work on that, alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item is, uh, ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight, Article three, Division four, motor vehicles, Rob, you wanna share with us about that?
Yeah, we, we discussed this at the workshop, basically, what we need to do, uh, we will revise our notices, ordinance that are related to motor vehicles due to the change in the state law, uh, basically, we have, uh, defined better, you know, what is a vehicle, we have defined better the notice requirements, uh, for abandoned and junk cars, uh, as well that the major issue is the disposition of those cars, uh, whereby we are going to, we will contract with a towing and wrecking service, once we've been through the process to have the, uh, vehicle declared abandoned or junk, uh, that towing service can then pick up the vehicle, take it to a towing yard, and then they will be responsible for all the notification requirements of the Department of Motor Vehicles, notifying the owners, and then, you know, filing whatever leans that they want to, and then collecting on those leans, so it really, uh, it's a much better streamlined process for us, get these abandoned junk cars out, give, you know, give it a judicial determination that they are junked and abandoned, and then get them towed off, and then it's basically the towing and wrecking service responsibility to see through all the requirements of the Georgia law for notifications and, uh, and the leans and the disposition of things.
Alright, take a motion. Is there a move? Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further? That Jack made the motion, and MJ seconded, alright, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and then our last, uh, item under ordinances is amending chapter seventy-four, Article five, for implementing a seven percent excise tax on rooms, lodging, and accommodations, AKA the hotel motel tax, any updates or anything we need to know about that?
I think just, we can tell you, I mean, basically, House Bill eighty-four, that authorized us to increase our hotel motel tax from five percent to seven percent, the good thing about the additional two sentences, one, you know, one of those pennies is gonna be able to go to tourism product development, which is your bricks and mortar, uh, which is something new, you know, uh, that we've not had before, so basically, you know, this was a, uh, it was a little confusing while the COVID was going on, but it did get through, legislation was passed, uh, and just basically, just our ordinance, uh, revising, uh, you know, chapter seventy-four, Article five, to, uh, provide for the use of the seven percent, and how it's gonna be expanded.
And I'd like to publicly thank, um, Carden Summers, our new senator, for his work on this, and, and, and working to, to get this through, and then also our legislators, Penny Houston and Clay Purple, and, um, am I leaving off?
Sam.
Sam Watson, thank you, for their support as well, um, so we appreciate their work, so we'll need a motion.
Penny really pushed it, didn't she?
Yeah, Penny worked very hard with Carden on this, yes, she, she's, she does a fabulous job, so we'll need a motion, um, for the, okay, alright, so we have a motion from Wes, a second from Johnny, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and then, uh, we're now under other business, our board report, and Jessica has put together a, um, a little report here for us to see where we're at and what we're doing, and we've already got a change we've got to make, so, um, we have several that we can, can appoint this evening, the only change would be under Historic Preservation Commission, and I mentioned that at the beginning of our meeting, uh, we were going to reappoint Ray Cross, and Ray has, uh, now been appointed to the Downtown Development Authority, so we'll have that seat open, but we can take these, um, one at a time, we can start with Tipton, Tipton County, well, Jessica, is there anything you need to go over with us, or is it pretty self-explanatory?
Okay, I would prefer to make, um, recommendations based on the seat, not like, pre-volving.
Right, yeah, I'll go, yeah, I'll take that one, yeah, okay, alright, so for the Tipton, Tipton County Library Board, Lillian Morgan was an applicant, and the executive director of the library has recommended appointing, uh, Lillian Morgan, so, um, if that is your pleasure, I'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Alright, thank you, Johnny, and we have a second, thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, then we have the City of Tipton Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Board has, uh, unanimously voted and recommended appointing the following applicants, La- La Maurice Taylor for reappointment, and Julie Sharp for reappointment, so they are submitted for your consideration. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Urban Redevelopment Authority, uh, our own MJ Hall serves on that particular board, and MJ would like to be reappointed, and the Urban Redevelopment Agency unanimously voted and recommended appointing MJ, or reappointing MJ, so we'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Second, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and then last, but not least, uh, we have the libra, excuse me, the Housing Authority, uh, Dina Willis is seeking reappointment, and Larry Memes is a new applicant, and we have his, uh, information on file, the board did, uh, unanimously, unanimously vote and recommend appointing Dina, uh, reappointing Dina to that, uh, Housing Authority Board, so that is for you.
Is there only one seat to make?
There's just one seat right now, yeah, there's just one seat.
Did they have, uh, these applications, Judge's application?
That I don't know, I'm, I don't know.
Did they have, did they have Judge Memes's?
Yes.
Uh, okay, application.
I move we reappoint Dina.
Okay, so we have a motion to reappoint Dina, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Larry's, um, application will stay on file, so as a seat comes available, we can absolutely, um, make that consideration.
No, no question.
Was there anything else that he was interested in?
I don't know.
I think we ought to put him on some of his books.
Oh, yeah, it's wonderful, yeah, okay, does that cover everything that's gonna need to satisfy and fill those board seats? Okay, so the only seat we have open right now is on the Historic Preservation Commission, correct? And that's a one-year appointment? Have one?
Yes, I've paid the fee on Tuesday.
Oh, keep it beautiful, okay, okay, so just keep that in mind, y'all, talk, ooh, talk to your constituents and talk to people, alright, uh, Pete, City Manager Report.
Um, the only thing I have is, I hope you noticed, uh, the work at the exits, um, and I wanna thank Jeff, uh, for working with the DOT very closely, uh, we, obviously, our four exits were the only ones that had, still had the plantings from a long time ago, the, the, um, Cypress coverings, and it was so overgrown, it was, there was just nothing but weeds, and it was very, very, um, aesthetically, um, it didn't represent us so well, so Jeff, uh, worked with the DOT, the maintenance workers came in, they're not done yet, so they're mowing, saving the trees, and they're gonna come back and mulch the area, we're gonna come back and, and put some, uh, smaller plants, and maybe some ivy, and maybe some more mulch, and, uh, in, um, in no time, they're, they're all gonna look good, especially Exit sixty-four, it really looks great, so, thank you, Jeff, for doing that, we have a little more work to do, but it's gonna change the appearance of our exits, so I'm real proud of that, that's all I have.
Okay, alright, Mayor and Council comments, uh, Johnny, you wanna go first? Or you want me to come back to you?
Yeah, you might better come back.
Okay, MJ, you wanna go first?
Uh, nothing, uh, nothing really much here, just, uh, proud to be living healthy.
Alright.
Yep.
Alright, Jack?
I probably said all I need to say.
Yes, you probably have. Wes?
I'm happy.
You're happy?
I'm happy.
Alright.
Well, I'm happy.
Well, you're happy, okay, well, that was pretty simple.
Pretty good, I'm happy.
Um, I do want to, um, thank, um, ESG, I, I talked to Jeff earlier, if you've driven through the historic district, you will see you, um, post for the street signs and, and stop signs and everything, this was a collaboration between the Tipton Heritage Foundation, the Downtown Development Authority, the Urban Redevelopment Agency, uh, to buy these signs, and they look fantastic, they really look good, they're very decorative, they fit the kind of historic district look, and, um, so it's really exciting to see, it's, it, you know, the details of just something as simple as a, a street sign, a decorative street sign, really makes a tremendous difference, and, um, just want to remind everybody that we need to be particularly careful, um, in making sure that the information that we distribute to the community is accurate, people call us for things that we don't even, we're not even responsible for, but sometimes we do have information that we can share, so just want to remind people in this age of all the social media experts on COVID, all the social media experts on what's going on in the world, that we need to be very, very careful on, um, on, on the information that we distribute, and make sure that it is accurate and factual, and, and based on that, and so, not to, um, subject ourselves to innuendo or, or rumors or things like that, because it can really be, be disturbing, so just want to remind you, I'm, I'm so happy to be on social media, I can't tell y'all how happy I am, but, um, but anyway, just, just be very cautious, that's all.
Mayor, let me just add, if any of you hear anything, or have questions about things that are going on, especially with the other entities, if you'll just text me or call me, I'll make the calls and get you the facts, I'll do that for you.
Okay, no need for executive session, I hope?
May.
Okay, excellent, anything else to come for the council? Alright, if not. All right, if not, we are adjourned, so thank y'all. Good meeting.